...for two things in a couple of weeks when we meet. An update and all the, maybe a comprehensive report on Elsie Drive, when it's going to open and maybe, you know, what are some of the attributes such as the sidewalks, lighting, seating, or some, any other attributes that I can report back to some people, some of my constituents that are asking. It's open, is there, what are all the attributes? Is there anything else to be added?
I can't hear you too, like the sidewalks and all that kind of street lighting and that stuff.
That's what, I'm kind of getting phone calls since it opened and what are the other attributes going to be to it, so I just want to report back if it's completely finished or if there's still some things to be added.
It's done, it's open, people are using it.
Okay.
What more?
Lighting.
Yeah, there's no lighting.
Mike, I'm sorry, Mr. Leonard, could you use your microphone and?
Delighted, yes, sir.
And could we have the Director of Engineering?
Lighting, you know, that's not a problem.
Thank you. Ms. Labata, if you could state your position and repeat what you said so we could get this.
Kristi Labata, City Engineer, the road is open and people are using it, so it's done, it's complete, and I can get you like lengths of sidewalk or anything of that if you want to do any kind of release to your constituents.
Yeah, and like Mr. Leonard said, the lighting and what kind of, is it going to be the LED lighting or is it going to, you know, what?
We haven't talked about lighting yet, we haven't talked about lighting yet, that'll be, I guess, the next phase.
Okay.
But we'll talk about it, I can get you something.
Okay. And then there's another project that's wrapping up the Blake. If I can get a report and update on what we know about it and when it possibly could open, don't leave that report today, we can get that in a couple of weeks and I'll just put that on the agenda so we thoroughly have all the facts with that. The other thing, in closing my report today, I do want to send my guest congratulations to our President for being released from the hospital and the First Lady after experience of being tested positive for COVID. I know we've had several members, or some of our members also go through that experience and we've got many people that are dealing with it with their families and we certainly want to make sure that everybody that's fighting it or has experienced it, that we're getting steps closer to bringing closure to this virus at some point very soon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine, and all that leaves is myself, and again, I want to apologize for my tardiness and thank you all for being here tonight. Those of you that are at home or following along on your mobile devices, I appreciate you as well. Mr. Leonard, I know we talked about the trees and the impaired visibility of the lights, what have we come up with with regard to the intersection in front of Margaret Shaw Library?
I knew you were going to ask for that, so I sent me to the development of our partners earlier today. They are in the process of selecting a contractor who's going to be treating, very severe treatment, but also introduce initial signage and places in the area. Our feeling is cutting down the trees is not going to happen, so we can improve the visibility by trimming those trees, those oak trees, and we need additional signage. And clearly, the number one problem is speed. Cutting down the trees is probably not going to help us with speed. So I think a combination of those, but in terms of the trees, I asked if I could say tonight, told yes, that would be correct, contractors being selected and the trees will be trimmed sometime in the next thirty days.
Okay, thank you, I agree, I think the biggest concern is speed, but it's not speed itself, it's the inability to know that a stoplight is coming ahead, so signage will probably help us system as well. Thank you for your diligence, so that I know the people in my ward are very concerned and appreciate all the efforts that we put forth. With regard to that same area, Ms. Labata, the Director of Engineering, if I could get you to grab the microphone for a moment, we addressed some traffic concerns south of the Pops Ferry Bridge in front of the entrance to La Bontaire. I don't recall the entire process, we talked about the turn lane on Pops Ferry Speedway that ends, and people just cut traffic off. What is the process? We need to get those cones out there, I think at the time you were underneath Dan Gaiye in the Engineering Department when he was here, and he worked with Public Works in Ulysses to make this happen. What do we need to do to address that turn lane and cone, not the way we did La Bontaire's entrance?
I can take a look at it, I can get with Public Works and with Public Safety with Chief Miller, just to make sure there's no public safety issues, and then talk to Mike, come up with a plan and talk to Mike about it, and I don't, usually there's not an issue with that, it's pretty simple and straightforward.
Can you imagine it was going north to south or south to north?
South to north, it's where the Pops Ferry bottlenecks because we haven't extended the extra lane all the way down to the bridge, and so people jump into the turn lane where the dog park is and speed up to cut off the traffic in front of them. And, I mean, I've seen, I've seen people almost hit each other, hit the curb, almost go into the yard in front, it's a, it's a serious concern, you know. Thank God we haven't had any major accidents as of yet, but it's coming if we don't do something about that area.
Well, he's talking about La Bontaire, how they have the delineators that are permanently attached, so we can just put, they're relatively inexpensive, we can just put some of those in that turn lane. We can, we'll take a look at that.
It's a right turn only from before the intersection with the stoplight, that's a right turn on the lane, so if we, and they're jumping in that lane, traveling down, so I don't know if there's anything we can do to cut that lane off for choir cars to turn if they get into that turn lane into the park area or turn back on, on review, and then enter the lane to make the turn onto North Country Club. But some way to break the traffic up to prevent the potential tragedies that we see. I see them every day when I'm on that road, and it's tempting, I can imagine someone with less control while they're driving from using that lane to advance their position in traffic. However, if you would give me a call this week so we can try to get that resolved, whatever steps we need to do. Lastly, while you have the microphone, the contract for the sidewalks on Sunkist.
So I met with our sidewalk contractor actually yesterday because we have quite a few projects in the queue for him to get an update of where he was. He is, because of all these storms, his projects are pushed back, and he also is, has a lot of more projects than normal right now, so we told him it's probably going to be like in November before he can get to our projects, which we talked about, the sidewalk, East Biloxi, there was some stuff, I was going to have him look at the stuff on Roy Street for Councilman Gines as well, so it's going to be, I was hoping he can get to it, usually he's on it within two weeks, but with these storms and the amount of work he has going on right now, he's a little behind schedule.
Okay, at least we've got some progress.
I did, I met with him yesterday, so we're working towards it.
I've got two things left, Mr. Mayor, do we have any provisions for cruising the coast with regard to the pending storm?
Well.
Have you heard from Morty Bailey at all?
We haven't, we've been trying to get by tomorrow, and if the thing is such that we need to start evacuating, get the notice out on Thursdays and be out of here Friday, because I think that's when the weather, the impact will be. We had talked a little bit about some contingencies, I think it was May 17, we had some problems with bridges opening and trailers and multi-axle vehicles breaking down, holding things up if the bridge breaks down, so we're going to, in talking with Chief Miller and about evacuation, if we do pull the trigger and ask everyone to leave town, I think we had eight hundred or so trailers and RVs, we'll ask them to exit either to the east, going east over the Ocean Springs Bridge and going to Highway 49, because the main traffic will be holding things up and no one will get stuck in those roads, those causeways, and something happens because it'll be bad for getting those vehicles off and about, so we're going to ask them to exit through Ocean Springs or through up toward.
Mr. Barrett was requesting some information regarding how far in advance do we see this, do we perceive this, and so to dovetail off that, as I was coming in today, I suggested maybe we call a state of emergency now instead of trying to round everybody up.
Well, I think that's your next, Peter, if it's on your agenda.
I saw the COVID-19 statement.
It's also X, I think.
Okay. Oh, Steve, I got you.
There's some triggers that we can pull without having to have a.
I'm sorry, one at a time. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think there's some triggers in this ordinance or this resolution that if, you know, it gives us the ability to pull the trigger without getting everybody up together, but, you know, I think we'll get by tomorrow, I think if things will be figured out whether we can get through Friday and Saturday. I would, again, Thursday will get the word out, I think Vincent, actually getting the folders and those kinds of things that we could distribute to everyone if we do decide to evacuate. So hopefully, like George was asking, hope it moves on and passes us at least this year. But that's.
Make your time, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
You didn't hear that?
Ding, ding, ding.
Funny guy, that's a funny guy. Lastly, I do want to mention that we did have a council meeting, thank you, all the Directors and Mike for showing up and providing information to the men and women that were there, and we had a great turnout with regard to the weather and COVID, people came out, received the information, it was a great meeting. That being said, if there's any questions, especially you at home, that you'd like to ask, my phone is always with me, I have it in front of me, so message me, go to the website, on the left-hand side, you'll see the Council, you'll see my pretty mug in C4, and my phone number right below it, so send me a message if you have any questions or concerns and we can address them while we're here. That will conclude my report, we'll move on to the public agenda with citizens' comments. Forty-five minutes allotted total, three minutes per person. If you would, when you come to the front, state your name for the record and your address and then sign in for me, is there anybody on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Please come forward and again, state your name and your address and sign in for me.
First, I want to commend the City, the Mayor and Councilman Glavine for acknowledging and bringing awareness to breast cancer, that's an ongoing battle for a lot of people and that's something that sometimes we don't pay enough attention to until this month, but that's a really big issue. It's personal for me, my great-grandmother Victoria Beck passed away of breast cancer in 2015 at the age of 98. She was a very strong woman and that cancer gave her a really long time, really tough time, and it really drains you and takes a lot out of you and your family, and I think it's a great thing that we're bringing awareness to that. I want to talk about a few things, first, I want to say on October 10th, the East Biloxi Community Collaborative is getting together and doing an award cleanup with a few other organizations, the Salvation Army is included, I think the Biloxi Housing Authority is included, I didn't hear that mentioned, but I think we need to get people out, we need to start having a little more pride in our ward. Councilman Gines, I had a conversation with you on September 24th, and this is moving on, this isn't related to the cleanup, I had a conversation with you on September 24th for about 27 minutes and 34 seconds, I have it written down, and you spoke for 24 of those minutes, so it wasn't really a conversation, but I asked you a few things about the community center, I haven't heard that mentioned in a while, I asked you about the funding, if you wanted any assistance with it, and your response was, no, I can't do that, I can't give you ammunition. That bothered me a lot. You took an initiative that a citizen from your ward wanted to help you with and you politicized it and you made it about you, and that's bigger than all of us, that was very bothering to me, I'm not going to ask about it anymore, but I just thought that should be brought to the awareness of everybody because that's something that touches everyone and everyone wants a community center in our ward, and we don't know the progress of it, we're not being updated on it, and people are reaching out and nothing's been done. Also want to ask you again about the ward meeting, about a month and a half ago, I asked you about that, and haven't heard anything about it since. You know, I have three minutes for this, I have 47 seconds left, please let me know, are we going to have one?
Mr. Williams, this isn't a back and forth, this is just.
Well, later, after this, I'm open for another conversation, but, you know, I mean, I only get three minutes here and it seems like this is the only time that I can say anything and actually have it acknowledged, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room that would care to come up and speak? Is there anybody on the left-hand side of the room, my right-hand side, that would care to come forward and speak? Is there anyone in the back of the room? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
My name is Bertrand Easton, 324 Elmer Street.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Bertrand Easton, 324 Elmer Street.
Okay, Mr. Bertrand, thank you, if you would sign in for me.
I think I'll stand for this here.
Well, if you would, use the microphone so the record can reflect your speaking.
How you doing, Mr. Faze? I'm about like Maurice over here, we have three minutes to actually come up there and state what we have to state and get a point across to what we're trying to do, whatever we're trying to do to make this community better, and three minutes is not nearly enough time to do that. I've come before this council meeting a number of times, I come with solutions, not problems, it's best to have a solution to the problem if you know what the problem is, and what I have here with me today and I always carry with me is those solutions. I cannot present those solutions to you all in three minutes. It's a lot going on in our community, it's a lot going on in Biloxi, it's a lot going on in the world, these problems can be addressed, and three minutes is not enough time to get the point across. So, with that being said, what I choose to do for the remainder of my time is take a stand. I'm going to stand. I'm standing for not only Biloxi, not only for Ward 2, Ward 3, Ward 4, Ward 5, this is supposed to be a community. So unless we're going to work together and help each other out with this situation because I do feel like an outcast, I do feel that way, this takes time, and there should be someone in this room that has the intelligence or the heart enough to help us out in whatever we're dealing with in this crisis. There's a way out of this, people are struggling, not just in our community, but worldwide. So for the remainder of my time, I just choose to stand in silence unless you guys want to give me some time to express what I have here in my briefcase, which is a solution. I can't do it here in three minutes, one minute left, it's not possible. If there's someone that can sit aside or pull me aside or pull us aside, I have my uncle with me here from Georgia, we have solutions to your issues. I cannot give until you in three minutes. So, I'll stand in silence for the last three minutes. This is how we feel. Alone. All right. Y'all come talk to me, I'm president and honor, East Cali Organization located on 546th Division, I'm no woman.
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand, I would like to remind you, as well as everyone else, that you don't just have the three minutes here, you're allowed, we do allow the three minutes here, but if you go to the website, like I was telling the people at home, if you go to the website, you'll find all of our, all of our email addresses, all of our phone numbers on the City of Biloxi website, feel free to reach out to us, many of us are open to meeting with members of the ward and our constituents and working through the problems, sometimes this isn't the right time or place for it, but there are plenty of opportunities to reach out to us and talk to us at other times.
Invitation is always.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the back of the room that would care to speak? There being none, we will close the public agenda and open the policy agenda. Lucy Ordance A.
Ordinance amending Chapter 12 Licenses and Business Regulations by adding Article 12 Mobile Food Amending.
Do I have a motion? Got a motion by George Lawrence and a second by Paul Tisdale, this is the first reading, so we'll move forward to Ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend and add Chapter 18 entitled Cemeteries.
Do I have a motion? Got a motion by Team Lawrence Tisdale. This was also a first reading, so we'll move on to Ordinance C.
Which is Lawrence and Tisdale.
Ordinance to authorize a change in zoning from RS5 High Density Single Family Residential to NB Neighborhood Business for properties located in Oak Street and Fourth Street.
Thank you, Lucy, this was originally moved by Team Lawrence Tisdale, Councilman Lawrence.
Discussion's still being routine.
Jerry Green, I mean, I'm not a big fan of short-term rentals, and that's how we're doing all this, the short-term rentals we get, and all these people in it, they're all happy about it, the Planning Commission voted 12 to vote for this, so I guess we're just moving to all of the short-term mills. Nothing really is changed, because nothing else changed there. The neighborhood's been the same for the last 75 years, business has been there for 30 years, so we're able to prove as well, and everybody wants to do, and all we can do is support them. So, could you explain what happened at the meeting yourself?
Well, what happened is that Mr. Hugh was operating a short-term rental on Fourth Street right off of Howard Avenue, and he went before community court, and the judge gave him an opportunity to go back and talk with us about what it would take to bring his property into compliance, so we told him that it would require zoning change, but he only had one lot there, so what he did is went and talked to the other neighbors on that side of the property, this is the west side of Oak Street, and they all went in on the application and requested that the zoning be changed. Now, the property on the south end of this area of Oak Street is already zoned NB, and the property on the north end is zoned industrial, so it's just the residential properties that are in between Howard Avenue, a few lots north of Howard Avenue, and then south of the industrial property, which is the power company building, and, you know, you've got 22 property owners that are joint applicants on this request.
I think they have five buildings, five residential.
Yes, sir. There was no opposition at the Planning Commission meeting to the request, there was one gentleman that had some questions about it, but when he realized that his property was not going to be affected, then he didn't have any more questions to it. But if you, if you look at this section of Oak Street, I mean, you've got the Asian churches down on the south end of this area, you've got the power company building on the north end, you've got a commercial building at the corner of Oak and Division Street on the west side, and these properties are sandwiched in between those, then you look over on the west side and you've got a concrete plant, you've got the boulevard entrance going back to the old Margaritaville, you've got the Cableman Building and a two-story retail spot there, so there is a lot of commercial already in this area, and so they just felt that they would ask for zoning on it. Now, we've only had one person, Mr. Hugh, the original applicant, that has asked anything about short-term rental, but I guess the other people felt that their property would be more marketable if it was zoned NB, which is a, is neighborhood business and it's a very appropriate zoning to abut single-family residential houses.
I don't know probably you're talking about that building that, concrete plant, the power company, the churches, we've been here. I guess if that's what we're going to do with these short-term rentals, that's why we're going with the city, and if everybody wants to do it, then we'll do it. I hope that you can, if you're prepared, you can collect the money for it, and you know, one guy does something wrong, you change the whole area. Think about that. So, everybody, hey, all the people want it, can you reach a 12O, you have any, you have any problem with it? Then that's what's going on, we'll go for it. Thank you. It's up to you, Tisdale.
Councilman Tisdale? What he said.
Thank you.
Jerry, am I correct in assuming that what you said was everybody in this area signed on to this? So this is, this is really an instance of the community coming together, so this isn't one person doing something wrong and it changing the city, this is an entire section of a community that agrees to doing this?
Yeah, this is, this is what normally happens when you have one property owner that comes forward and he's asking for a zoning change, we'll suggest that he go back and talk to the other property owners, now sometimes they're in opposition to what he's requesting, but in this case, he went and talked to the other property owners, he came back in with the application of all 22 property owners on the west side of Oak Street that are zoned residential, and they all agreed, so their names are on the application.
Anybody else on the council with a question? Call for the question, and all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand, please. Motion case unanimously. Move to Ordinance D.
Ordinance to authorize a change in zoning from RS10 High Density Single Family Residential to NB Neighborhood Business for property located at 12648 Lorraine Road, formerly identified as 12363.
Barrett and Gines.
Councilman Barrett initially moved this discussion?
Yeah, I'll save my comments for when we vote on the next section of this and E.
Councilman Gines?
I think there's a reason to pay back on this, I think, I mean, the neighborhood, they've been doing business, Jerry has the barbecue sauce, and I think that we'll deal with this.
Discussion, council?
I'm trying for a good reason. I was trying to figure this out too.
Yeah, I got a call from multiple people the day of that this was on the agenda, they weren't aware that it was on the agenda, and so I talked to Jay Lee, I talked to Jerry, and they agreed to table it for two weeks until I had time to sit down with the people and discuss it with them. And I did that yesterday.
Did we have, was Jay Lee okay with it?
No, he wasn't, and, and, and they understand that the rezoning is inevitable just because of the change of Lorraine Road itself, they did, do have some concerns, like I said, but that's something we can discuss during the conditional use, which is E, but it's, they understand that the rezoning of it is inevitable if it's now or later just because of the location and everything surrounding it is commercial, and it's eventually going to happen, and so we're good.
Right. You know, it was published, it was properly published, wasn't it?
Yes.
For them to understand, so why are they not here?
I talked to, we're good, I talked to him last night.
Now, Jay, what you're saying is Jay Lee was okay with it?
Yes, yeah, I talked to.
Okay.
No, no, we.
If he's okay with it, then I'm okay.
Yeah, I talked to him before we tabled it, and it just, the two weeks just gave us time for me to discuss with some residents.
Gotcha.
That lived near the area last night.
Okay. So what you're doing, motion, you're moving to table it?
No, 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 we won't vote on it.
Okay, yeah.
It was previously tabled.
It was tabled originally for two weeks.
Call for the question. I'll call for the question, all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand, please. Motion case unanimously, so take us to Resolution E.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a storage facility for property located at 12648 Lorraine Road.
Do I have a motion?
Here it is.
Motion by Councilman Barrett.
Second. Yes. So we're discussing?
Discussion.
All right, originally, when this came before the Planning Commission, it was boxed a little different than this and there was some concerns, and so it was, it was, I guess, tabled and restructured and brought before the planner, brought back before the Planning Commission, and there were still some concerns, and the concerns from the residents weren't necessarily just this property, but the property across the street, because that piece of property goes much further into the neighborhood, you know, this, this piece of property is a half acre, piece across the street is more like three to four acres, and it goes way down into a really private street, and so their concern is because of this piece being rezoned, their main concern, that this piece being rezoned, that it would open the door for the. main concern, that this piece being rezoned, that it would open the door for the other piece to be rezoned, but from my understanding, and just, just so that this is on record, the planning commission would not resume that other any further off of Lorraine Road than what, depth-wise, than what this piece is, is that correct?
That's the position that they took, now they won't rule on it until they actually get an application from the gentleman that owns the other property, but the, the, the people who live on Tiffany Lane, some of them came and spoke, and said, you know, we, we are concerned about the other piece of property, and what we'd like to do is to make sure that when he does request a zoning change, he's not allowed to encroach any further down Tiffany Lane than what this property boundary already is.
And I would request that as well, and, and I don't, you know, I know that that's not something that's been done yet, but I would request that as well, I've worked the property, and, you know, this is a very private street, and like I said, the Lorraine side of it is very commercial in that area now, um, however, the depth beyond that is not, and that, like, it's a dead-end street with maybe eight, 10 houses on it, and, um, you know, going any further depth-wise than, than what Mr. Lee's property is, I think would be, um, you know, disrupting that, that subdivision, so I would request that. Uh, a couple of other concerns is, um, the, the main concern is, is the drainage, and I know that we have to have, um, the, the post has, and has to, can't exceed the pre-
That's true.
-um, with engineering, so, uh, as long as that's done, and then they did request a couple of things last night when I met with them, one of them was that whenever the trash is taken out, uh, because they don't know the amount and stuff, that that's done on Lorraine Road, not the Tiffany, um, Lane side, so if we can put that in the conditional use, as well as they asked that the nice side of the fence be facing Tiffany Lane, um, versus the, the, the ugly side of the fence, and so if those two things can be done, um, you know, put into the conditional use, added into this, um, you know, they, they live with it, they're not completely happy, but they, they will live with it, and I just asked Mr. Lee, um, just be a good neighbor to them, and everything will be good.
Okay. Go to the question.
Mr. Gines originally seconded this. Oh, sorry, Gines, I'm sorry. Mr. Lawrence, I apologize.
No problem. We, we, you see, no problem with this on the table today, so you're willing this to be, all the things you said, if it's not in writing, I think it'll happen.
Well, I'm asking that to be added to.
Has to be in writing.
But you can amend it. Yeah, I want to amend it to, to do the conditional use. I want to amend the conditional use for the nice side of the fence to be out, the trash that's taken out, and then also, um, as, as, another question, I forgot, deliveries, um, pickups, drop-offs, what time, um, it, will that be done usually?
He didn't say, but he said he only has one delivery book that comes a month.
In the morning, once a month?
Yes.
So that's, what about pickups? So they just, they just come and pick up once a month?
Right, and the way that I understood, of course, one of the conditions that, that we put on it was that the driveway, the access coming in and out, would be on Lorraine Road, and there would be no address and address to Tiffany Lane.
All right.
So, uh, the, the building itself will stand between the neighbors and any deliveries that are brought to.
And, and, and the fence on the backside, and starting at eight foot and tapering down as it gets closer to Lorraine, is in this conditional use, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so I would just like to amend those two things in the conditional use.
I'll second, I can amend it.
Okay. And outside of that, we're good. The, the, the main issue is that other piece of property, when, if and when that comes up, um, I just, you know, I gave them my word that, that I would, I would fight against, you know, them trying to come any deeper, and like you said, um, the planning commission had said that would be their stance as well, so I just want to make sure that that's, that that's, that word's kept.
Wait there, um, I want to get this clear, there's a, a motion to amend on the table, can you, can you give me an explanation of what that amendment is? I didn't touch.
The nice side of the fence to be facing Tiffany Lane and the neighbor.
Yeah.
And then the trash that's taken out to be put on Lorraine Road versus Tiffany. Whenever they take their trash to the road to be put on, um, Lorraine Road versus on Tiffany.
Is that, is that doable with the contracts with the HCS?
Yes, and Mr. Lee's been very agreeable to everything that we suggested to him.
Well, the Lee's may have, does that, does that, um, is there any requirement to, to communicate that with the Houston County Utility Authority to determine when and where trash gets picked up?
We don't know whether it should, we just make sure that it's in a place where they can get their truck in and put it out.
The address has been changed from Tiffany to Lorraine, correct?
Correct.
So I would think that whenever they get their can, they would be at the, the addresses of Lorraine, where they just wanted to be sure that that was something that was put into the, to the deal to where that's followed.
I get, I'm just trying to be as clear as possible to make sure that there is no hiccups. If we have to address the Houston County Utility Authority with regard to where the trash has to be put, if we can do it this way, great, just wanted to make sure we can. I do, I have a, um, I've got a second.
Yes, she's, I'm, I'm gonna write it in there, she's.
Okay, let you, let you pass it, if you're really correct, you better change it.
We're, we're passing the amendment, we're adding the language.
I'm just saying, make sure that you want it in there.
I will, I will review it.
Jerry Green, you're doing me good, if you're in the resolution.
Before I sign it, I'll make sure that the language is in there.
Okay.
Thank you. I've got a second, hi, Councilman Glavin, is there any discussion on the amendment? There being none, all in favor of the amendment? Motion case unanimously, resolution E is amended. We got a vote on the. Do we have any further discussion on the resolution as amended? There being none, I call for the question on resolution E as amended, all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion case unanimously. We'll move to F.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plot approval for Exileb subdivision for property currently identified as 1920 Brazier Road.
I'll move it. I have a motion by Councilman Glavin, and a second by George Lawrence, Councilman Glavin, discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, this is a large undeveloped, uh, piece of property on, uh, by Waters View on the north side, um, in following this, this is seven parcels in that undeveloped area, uh, it's appropriate, there's a lot of single-family homes in and around Brazier, uh, roads, so this, uh, should be very, very appropriate.
Thank you, Councilman Glavin, Councilman Lawrence?
I support the Councilman, Ward 6.
Thank you for your comments. Discussion on the council. There being none, I call for the question, all in favor of resolution F. Councilman Gines, I missed your vote, were you for or against? Motion case unanimously, we move to item G.
Resolution granting minor subdivision plot approval for property identified as 8671 Boss Hustle Road.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Then a motion by Councilman Barrett, and a second, second by Councilman Glavin, Councilman Barrett, discussion?
This is just splitting one parcel into two, correct?
Yes, that's how it is, there's, there's an existing house on a very large piece of property, they're isolating the house, it's all, meets LDO requirements, all right?
Councilman Glavin, discussion?
Just glad to see the development continue throughout all our wards, and I support the councilman from Ward 7.
Is there any other discussion on the council? Call for the question, all in favor. Motion case unanimously, we move to H.
Resolution supplementing, resolution number 55120 regarding 2021 municipal budget.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Lawrence, and a second by Paul Tisdale, Councilman Lawrence, discussion?
Yeah, like, uh, pull this up, and you have the rabid in the lid, what number do you actually change in this budget? Uh, nothing's, no numbers have been changed, and, uh, they've been expanded, because what was approved, certain funds were collapsed, that was a little bit, there was a collapsed version approved, as opposed to all the workshops where they were all broken out, so all the numbers are the same in this, it's just, um, for example, this, the water, water and sewer and the port funds, there was one big number for enterprise funds, so this basically is just separating those numbers.
So, you voted, you voted on what we published in the newspaper, what we're giving you tonight is an expanded version of that same that has more detail, just to supplement the record.
The bigger difference was that you had the water and sewer separated from the port, and not one term number. That was one, and then I think all the, um.
Twenty different columns that, that were expanded, it was collapsed.
Two different entities, you know, you can't, it can't be like one, it's two different groups.
You combine fund statements, it consists of about 25 columns, what was published that is a consolidation was then, so most people would not be able to read it in, have microscopes enough to, uh, to see that in the paper, it was a consolidation of those 20 funds, this is those 20 columns, that adds up to the same numbers. Is that not right?
That's right, Mayor, and again, they voted and approved what was published in the newspaper, what we're doing is supplementing the record by giving you the, the full blown-out form that expands all the categories, just for the record.
And have you given any, council, each one of councilmen has a report like this, separate? Have you all been there for this?
You had that in, in the workshop.
Separate, separated, not, which put in paper?
Yeah, it was both ways.
I'm just trying to make sure we all had the correct information, total numbers gotta be right, so.
Councilman Tisdale?
Basically, this is just in a different format, a more traditional format that we've seen in past years, these supplementary documents.
Right.
It's all, what was published in the paper was a, a more concise or consolidated budget that a lot of other municipalities do at, uh, budget time, so that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale, is there any discussion, further discussion on the council? There being none, I call for the question, all in favor of resolution H, signal with the raise of your hand, motion case unanimously, we'll move to resolution I.
Resolution supplementing resolution number 55120 concerning the 2021 municipal capital projects budget.
We got a motion by Councilman Lawrence, and a second by Paul Tisdale, Councilman Lawrence, discussion?
Same year, with, with the difference here.
Councilman, as you will know, because you've been doing it more years than me, the capital project quote-unquote budget changes every hour of the day of every day, based on expenditures, so what we try to do is, we try to lock it down prior to the budget workshops in, um, August, July, August, September period, and then when the year is actually finished, and it's, it's, and, and we can't do this until the year is completely over, we do reconciliation, and we give it to the council, the final reconciliation, normally we give that to you a little bit later, we're actually giving it to you, it's, it's done now, so all 56, I think, or 54 capital projects, what you're seeing on that is, and I can get you the expanded eleven and a half by seventeen, so you can, you don't have to squint to see it, what you're seeing is that as of midnight on the September the 30th, that's exactly how much money was in each one of those projects, it's different today than it was the day that was printed, though.
Is that the sheet that you gave us, this one here?
That's that one.
But this is, this is.
We gave you the eight, I didn't realize you had the big one, yeah.
It's a, it's a bit big, I appreciate you doing it, you check them out when you get them out there, get your stuff in your hand, you have to read everything, it's funny, so, it's a good time, just down with checking.
For the record, when I came to work here three years ago or so, we had about 40 capital projects, or, um, maybe, maybe 25, actually, and, and, and now we've got three times that, I can't, that, that is, and my engineer would, would be able to talk to this, but we're extremely busy right now with capital projects, it's, I mean, it, there's a lot of them, and there's an awful lot of work going on, our engineering department is meeting themselves, coming and going, trying to keep track of it all, but you can, if you look at that sheet, you'll see in, in all the columns, the original project amount, the current for the year project amount, the, I mean, the most important column you need to look at is the unencumbered, the unencumbered amount, how much is actually left that hasn't been spent or committed, and then out to the right-hand side, the multiple columns show the sources of all those funds, where, which grant, which bond, which multiple bonds, which grants, and so forth, where the, that adds up to the unencumbered amount.
You've only been here two years.
Yeah, and it seems like forever, actually.
I heard you were, I took the key to Jesus. Yeah, you're doing really good, appreciate it.
I was a lot younger when I got here.
Councilman Tisdale?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Any further discussion on the council? Councilman Glavin?
Uh, Councilman Den, I noticed that you got some, uh, an allocation in your ward for paving, if, if you don't need all that, I'll gladly entertain an amendment, if you want to transfer that over to Ward 6, you don't want to offer an amendment?
I like my life, and.
I was just checking, because you, you're in pretty good shape over there on Ward 6, I was, I mean, Ward 4, I was just checking, so, thank you.
Call for the question, all in favor of resolution I, signal with the raise of your hand, please, motion case unanimously, so bring us to the consent agenda, do I have a motion on the consent agenda? A motion by George Lawrence, and a second by Paul Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, uh, excuse me, do I have a, well, you moved a discussion?
Yes, uh, we got a few on here, you had the one in June, like, uh, at the closing of Doris Street, I know we're not finished a way, we're supposed to have hit, the road extended, and Doris to, to the blocks of downtown, and I had not finished that, I want to close this, the end is closed.
Yes, Councilman, what, what you're seeing here, CSX is administratively difficult to work with, every time you take a step forward, you have a new agreement you got to sign, we'd already signed an agreement with them to close Doris, now they want us to sign the closure agreement, which is just more, more legalese, no, no, nothing personal, Peter, about, about closing Doris, Doris is actually physically closed now, you can't get across it, but we just haven't put the barricade up, and, and you should see at our next council meeting, the same closure agreement for Nixon Street, that's the next one to close. This is historic, no, no city on the coast has closed any crossings in years, so this council two years ago approved closing six crossings, and before this next couple of months is over, we'll close three of those six.
We took our hands all up, you didn't.
As far as, you can, you can drive across it.
You can do it, but, I mean, I thought this was, the side roads finished.
This is more of, 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 just a legal agreement that, that we had permission to close the crossing.
And George, before you move on, I would like to see a few more cones in that area, because, um, I think I had a, um, resident that called about not enough cones, and they had dug up, dug up some of the ground, and so there was a little steep drop-off, so just kind of be mindful, whoever's digging, whoever's digging it out, give us some cones. Thank you, George. Uh, E, excuse me, F, uh, this is the, the, we're getting from the county, from the Hawkins.
Did you say E is an echo?
E is an easy.
That's F.
E is an echo, and the, the key word there is extending, in the first sentence, agreement extending the completion of the.
Fox.
Yeah, or, is it F?
Fordman.
Right, okay, what F is, you recall that the county gives us one mil or equivalent of, uh, tax money each year for our port, they give it to us in four increments, each quarter is an increment, this is the third increment, and what it, what we're doing with that is we're accepting the money into the budget, and we're dropping it into Project 1024, which is the Point Cadet Marina, that, uh, essentially becomes our match money with the $3 million Restore Act grant.
Is that the true hundred seventy-five time, three times a year?
That's correct, it's 375, three times a year, and then they true up the fourth time, usually it's about 450, so we're waiting for that true, true-up right now.
And another part actually pays the debt, and you still have about 2 million total, with all the stuff that goes to the debt, with all the debt from them, yeah, they did a good job getting that money.
About 2 million total.
Yeah, and Joe, they found that money.
They pay the bond, pay the bond, and then the rest comes to us in four increments. I, I, I went across the bridge today, I didn't see, in your ward, I didn't see anybody working on the lights on the bridge, so I think they must be about done, that's one of our projects that was done with this money, all the fishing beer, fishing pier lights, that's just an example of the kind of project we're doing with this grant money.
And probably say the name is the Legend Bridge, I'm probably, you need to put a name on it, maybe two or four people in the name on it, put all the money, call it the Legend Bridge, take care of everybody. And then, um, this is the. And then, uh, this is the project, I know what you're, I'm baby, when you call it waterfront.
Correct.
This is, you have a.
This is awarding the contract.
This, this is the contract.
This is it. That's right.
And, uh, how long they gonna run?
I think nine.
They're trying to take everything?
Two hundred and seventy days.
Nine months.
Nine months. And then P, we are extending the, the state of emergency, the code. I know the, the governor said you don't have to do, you're not, the master, not mandated. Have you changed anything in this?
We're still requiring, continuing to use mass in, in public buildings. I haven't changed anything, uh, since our last mandate.
So like to watch, you don't have to shut on it, love it.
All the same, yeah.
Nothing has changed from that.
Nothing has changed in his, in his thing either.
Alright, we got a little, we got a little friend here. Alright, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Who seconded that? Councilman Tisdale?
You had to ask? I know. It's that kind of night, it'll get better.
What do they say, uh, the sun shines on the dogs? Never mind, never mind.
I never heard that. Anyway. Uh, Mr. Lawrence, you had put forth, I think it's a resolution on fee with, uh, the Bishop Johnson Walkway. And I'm trying to picture, that's on Ridenberg, you've got the Abundant Life Center, and you've got like Welch Lane that runs east and west. There's a little drive behind that. Is that what's gonna be named the walkway there?
It's right on the path, but Welch Lane, oh, that's on that property. Now, so I'm just trying to change the name. Uh, would you put a sign like with the Edward Miller? And put Bishop J. Johnson's Walkway?
Okay.
It's all I'm just.
It doesn't matter. I got it. I was just trying to figure, was there something, was there a road or a lane or something? I didn't know. And there's something on the property. It starts with West, but like you said, it could run.
We don't have, we got, we didn't see what they were doing, it's not fun. I have no problem with it. Ten years, you know, you just went down to him. It's not a bad thing to do, so. I have no problem with it at all. That concludes my comments. Thank you. And if it's a walkway, you didn't have to change any addresses. So I did my whole name once and you just call it a walkway.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Demme? Councilman Glavin?
Nothing.
Councilman Barrett?
I have a couple. On, um, D, which is the Water Market City Center, this is just a final payment, no additional monies, correct?
Is that Delta, did you say?
Yeah, D.
Okay. That's right, fine.
And then on K, um, this is for, um, the additional closed-in ditch, the engineering fees to, to.
Right, engineering and inspection.
That's okay. And, um, Q, no additional monies, just an extension of time?
Correct.
And then on P, um, George asked this, um, so our state of emergency reflects, we have nothing in excess of what the governor has done, correct?
That's correct.
And you said that.
They're requiring, continuing to require.
In, in, in public buildings.
That's pretty much it.
On the eleven o'clock thing, that's still in effect on the statewide deal for bars?
Yep.
Yes. It's still in effect. Eleven o'clock, uh, cutoff of alcohol sales. Not closing, but cutoff of alcohol sales.
Okay, so they don't have to close, okay. But they have to stop selling alcohol at eleven?
Serving, not selling, serving.
Mayor, can you let us go to a Saints game? Can you let us go there?
Sir, okay, okay, that was my, alright, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett. Um, I have nothing further discussed. It hasn't already been discussed. Therefore, I call for the question. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion case unanimously. Those that have objections to any, um, resolutions on the consent agenda, please let me know now.
Done.
There being none, I will announce that I am in opposition to P. P is in Paul, Peter. Protection of your net. We will move on to code enforcement hearings. Councilman, I mean, excuse me, um, Director Creel, if you will, please, A.
Okay. Item A, Dante and Patricia Davis, three seventy-four Crease Street. This property is still in violation.
Now we all looking to the screen for, there we are.
I know nothing about the dredge project. A hard check, not dirty, but.
What's that?
It's a hard check.
Look at, I flick it.
That's okay.
I have a technical difficulty.
I have a technical difficulties.
If, um, if you could just show us the pictures and then we can make, we can make an assessment of whether we agree with your assessment. However, where is Peter abide? Um, procedurally, we have a, we have a duplicate resolution. Um, W is adding, and it appears to be a duplicate of P. W is added as the COVID nineteen state of emergency, but that was also on the agenda as P.
No, that's the, that's the new hurricane, W.
X is the hurricane.
Uh, whatever, yeah.
Okay, if, if you would note my opposition to W as well, until we get further clearance, whether they're the same or not?
No. Yeah, I didn't, I just, I just.
Director Creel?
The, uh, the pictures for some reason didn't transfer over from our department to, uh, the system over here. So you'll just have to take my word for it.
Or should we just postpone that till the next meeting?
You could, you could move to postpone, um.
I, I think we should.
There's a couple on here that we can, uh, clear off today.
Okay, if, if you would give us those so we can move, we can amend the agenda.
Okay. Item B, Joseph P. Fisher, uh, one zero eight nine Frank P. Corso Street. I talked with Mr. Fisher today and he has cleaned up part of it, but he asked for an additional thirty days.
So I make up a motion. We, we have a motion by George Lawrence for thirty-eight, sent in a second by Felix Skynes, all in favor. Signal with the raise of your hand. Motion case six zero, Nathan Barrett is out of the room.
Okay.
B, boy, beta. I have a, I move to amend the agenda to remove item A from the agenda. Will allow Mr. Creel to return to the agenda next week when we have the supportive evidence tabled for two weeks. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Felix Skynes, all in favor. Motion case unanimously, A, on the code enforcement, uh, agenda, is tabled for two weeks. We move to C.
Item C, John Meredith Garcia, four oh two Clay Street, that property is still in violation.
Do we have any?
No, the pictures do not come.
Do you have pictures of any of these?
Uh, no, but, uh, there are two more that, uh, are still in violation. Item D has been resolved.
I, I will move, I'm gonna make a motion to table item C for two weeks as well. Do I have a second? Second by Felix Skynes. Motion was by Robert Demming, um, all in favor. Motion case unanimously. Now D has been resolved.
D has been resolved, yes.
We move to code enforcement hearing E.
Uh, Ralph and Patricia Jane Jones, three forty-three Forest Avenue, that property is still in violation.
Do we have any of the evidence to demonstrate that? I'll, I'll move to, um, table E for two weeks as well, seconded by Felix Skynes, all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion case unanimously, code enforcement hearing E is tabled for two weeks. We move to F.
Item F, WTA Incorporated, two sixteen Ridenberg Avenue, this property is still in violation.
I'm assuming you have the same download problems. Then I will, I will, um, move to table F for two weeks, seconded by Felix Skynes, moving along with Robert Demming. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion case unanimously, F is tabled for two weeks. This will take us to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Paul Tisdale, do I have a second? Second by George Lawrence, discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
None, thank you.
There's no discussion by Mr. Tisdale, discussion, Councilman Lawrence?
Uh, Mr. Rhodey?
Mr. Rhodey, if you would come to the front with the microphone, state your name and your position.
No, what's in the white pipe? What's in the pipeline? Well, Rhodey, City of Bloxville Infrastructure Program Manager, today we received another one point three four five million from EMA. That's it.
What happened to the two?
Sir?
What happened to the two?
Uh, gotta keep that.
What two? One point three four five million. How much is the two?
Three million. A lot, a lot came in.
Well, I'm a dad, I can say jokes like that. Councilman Lawrence?
That's good. Okay.
Thank you. All in favor of the routine agenda, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion case unanimously, do I have a motion to recess? I mean, I got a motion by Paul Tisdale, seconded by George Lawrence, discussion, none. I call for the question, all in favor. Motion case unanimously, we are in recess.
Alright, man, have a good one. Be safe.